And after we do the new business.
Yeah, if Jean's still on, I'll do that. All right, it's not quite six thirty yet.
No, it's six twenty seven. Where is, where is Mark up in Canada?
I know he was, he said, I think his destination was like Nova Scotia or P E I, not. Not sure where he is right now. Do you know, Josh?
I, I saw on Facebook, he posted a picture, you know, in Canada now or crossing into Canada. I guess, yeah, at the border, he's posted a picture.
Just, just so anybody listening and him wondering why I'm getting off, I've been battling. A boat of pneumonia and sepsis. And it has not been a fun battle, but we're getting there.
Well, glad to hear it's trending in the right direction, Gene.
I have six thirty, so we can get going.
Yep, all right.
Hold on a second, let me just start the recording.
All right, the, the Board of Selectment meeting for June twenty first, twenty twenty three is now in session. Um, just to recap, Mark Condon is, Selectman Mark Condon is out of the country, won't be able to join us. And so we're gonna change up the agenda a little bit and launch immediately into new business. So we can get our votes done before other discussion topics. I'll read the motions, Gene, if that's okay with you. The, the first vote is a vote to approve the F Y twenty four master fee schedule. Uh, I moved at the Board of Selectment vote to approve the master fee ski, excuse me, master fee schedule for F Y twenty twenty four as presented.
Second.
Um, okay, seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, I can give some background, if just some, some quick background, we do this every year. We update our fee schedule and for the upcoming fiscal year. This year, the only change is we're really in the town clerk, clerk's office. Uh, there's adding a twenty dollar late fee for dog licensing. And a ten dollar raffle permit fee. Uh, we did look into, you know, it was. Josh, you and I talked a little bit about the raffle permit fee and Dan, you may not be. Uh, this may not be at the top of your brain either, but um, there is. Uh, requirement through the Attorney General's Office that um, raffles are permitted. So it's actually should have been in there all along. Um, so we're just updating our fee schedule so that we have that included in it. Um, and there's a lot of, a lot of guidance that comes through the Attorney General's Office about, you know, who can conduct gaming events like raffles. And, you know, what kinds of gaming activities and things of that nature. So it does actually fall through, uh, go through the clerk's office.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, um, there's a, there's a skill and there's a random sort of winning and raffling is random. So it's different than sort of a skill-based contest, so that makes sense.
What, what kind of raffles are we talking about?
Exactly what you're thinking, you know, um, really raffles can be done, can be conducted. By nonprofits. They can be. Done through, you know, veteran organizations, church or religious organizations. You know, it can be fifty fifty raffles, it can be, you know, that type of thing.
Yeah, thanks.
And um, I don't know, Tony, if you have the fee schedule up, maybe you can just share it and. Uh, but I think the main takeaway, just, I think you can just kind of scroll down. The changes are all highlighted in yellow and it's just the two that you just mentioned. So um, no other changes to the fee schedule uh, for this year. If uh, if you don't have it handy, that's fine, because really very little is changing. So for the twenty dollar late fee for the dog license and the um, ten dollar raffle fee.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up right now.
All right.
If you, if you're ready to vote. Go ahead and take me.
Yeah, and if anybody wanted to get a copy of this, they assume they'd see the clerk, right?
Yep, it's also, I believe it's also, I think we're required to have it posted on our website too.
Okay, all right. Okay, uh, well, with that, Gene, I'm ready to vote if. If you don't have any other discussion points.
Yeah, I'm good.
Uh, okay, we'll, we'll call vote.
King can't D I.
Uh, the next vote is a vote to approve appointment of the treasurer collector for F Y twenty four. I moved at the Board of Selectment vote to approve the appointment of Edmund Locke as the treasurer collector for F Y twenty twenty four.
Second.
Uh, seconded, any discussion?
Our town charter, our town charter requires that um, the treasurer collector position be appointed on an annual basis. Um, Ed's on the call with us here, uh, tonight, he's, you know, jumped into the position. And uh, off the running and much like all of us, you know, really kind of drinking from a fire hose and learning the new role. And he's doing a great job with it and um, you know, we commended him uh, at our department head meeting earlier this week. For implementing, uh, you know, the automated payment system that um, we just. Uh, initiated through the last billing cycle of water sewer trash. So um, actually it was just water sewer, I think, but uh, Ed, you're on the call, do you want to say anything?
Well, I appreciate uh, your kind words, Tony. Um, you know, everyone at the town hall, the staff, residents, they've been supportive and I do appreciate that. And um, hopefully I look forward to bigger and better things with the town coming forward in F Y twenty four.
Great, thanks, Ed. Um, I hear only good things, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Makes the people happy.
Likewise, um, but can I ask the same question I asked for the last three years? Is, is there any reason we can't make this performance related as opposed to an electorate? In other words, for the town clerk and for the treasurer collector, couldn't we make those full-time positions?
So they're both, so the clerk position is elected, the uh, treasurer collector position is appointed. Both are full-time positions, it's, we could change. We could go to the charter, uh, we could, you know, try to change the charter, require a town meeting vote. Uh, to eliminate the phrase that requires this annual appointment process. You know, just to clean it up, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to do that. Um, but uh, yeah, it's a little bit different from the clerk, but um, it would require a town meeting vote to change the charter.
I, I just know that if I were an even position, I'd much prefer to have a performance. Rated as, as opposed to appointed or elected, and I, I just something to think about.
Well, I mean, the hiring process for the, for the treasurer collector is, is kind of like a normal hiring process. So, you know, you come with your credentials and put in your application and, you know, um, it was the best candidate and got hired. It's just the renewal of his contract, like for example, we renew Tony's contract every three years, I guess it is. Um, and we renew Ed's um, every year. So far, I mean, my few years on the board, it's been pretty painless, but I understand what you mean, Gene, it seems a little odd.
I mean, I, I think that, I think it would, it's not a bad idea. Hopefully, we're not searching for a new treasurer collector anytime soon, Ed. Um, but I think that down the road, if we ever were, um, you know, being able to. Advertise it as like a three-year contract type position would probably help draw in candidates. So it's something that could help in the future and um. But yeah, it's, it's pretty painless. You know, quick vote, up and down vote at the end of every fiscal year.
Yeah, no, I know that, if it was performance related, I know. Both positions would remain in, in the position that they're in based on their performance. The idea is just it would be, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Don't you?
Yeah, yep, I do.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, um, we'll call vote.
King can't D I.
Josh, I from I. All right, the next item is a vote to approve the F Y twenty four debt shift. Uh, I moved at the Board of Selectment vote to approve the F Y twenty twenty four debt shift. In the amount of one million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Uh, seconded, um, discussion, Allison, would you be able to sort of explain this for us?
Yeah, so um, this is something that um, allows the town to raise. Um, this amount of money on property taxes instead of through the water and sewer rates. Um, the state law allows us to do that, um, and the town has done that every year. Um, so the purpose is it, you know, kind of spreading that cost over a larger base. Through all residents that own property in town. Um, so we come up with this amount, um, it's the principal and interest payments that'll be due in F Y twenty four. It's um, the actual total interest payments that are due is one point six million. Um, but we're taking the difference between this amount of the debt shift and, and that one point six. Um, we're using water and sewer retained earnings to pay that. Um, the approximate cost, additional cost, because we haven't set the tax rate, obviously, for F Y twenty four yet. But because of the debt shift, the approximate increase um, in uh, the tax rate per thousand. Is about fifty cents. Um, so just to keep that in mind, but basically, we do this every year. And it's to raise money in order to pay the principal and interest payments for our water and sewer projects.
So the um, the real estate tax. Change that sums up to this. Um, number. That is not, is not prorated based on your water sewer uses, right? It's just a, okay.
Nope, it's not.
I guess what I'm wondering is, is there a way we can get closer to having the water and sewer enterprise cover itself? Because for example, if someone is super conscientious about uh, not consuming water, um, and then we. Do this, have this debt that we have to shift, um, hate to use the word penalized, but um. They don't get all the benefit that they, that frugality would, would have yielded. Um, so I guess going forward, if we could target getting a little closer to a narrow. A near zero um, debt shift, uh, I would be in favor of that.
Yeah, and so that is one of the reasons why, you know, for F Y twenty four, we didn't F Y twenty three too. We've used water and sewer retained earnings to pay down some of the debt instead of relying solely on the debt shift. So there has been a conscious effort to start to do what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I was just gonna add, you know, we're not required to shift all of our debt, you know, we can do it in portions. We can, you know, do analysis going into a future fiscal year about, you know, where the healthy balance is there. You, yeah, you, you, you have, uh, it, you're essentially, it's, it's. Really how you distribute the costs and whether you want to go on a um. A volume-based. Distribution or a property assessment-based distribution, uh, so. It's gonna affect, you know, either whether, how you change that is gonna affect one half or the other, you know what I mean?
Yeah. All right, um, Gene, do you have any discussion?
No, I was just wondering how one offsets the other, or, or do they produce the same results?
So if that whole amount, the one point three million was raised simply through water and sewer rates. The water and sewer rates would be much higher. So not necessarily, that's why the town has chosen to do it in this way. But to Josh's point, and it's, the finance committee has brought it up over the past few years. They are, um, they have asked us to look at moving some of that, you know, the debt shift burden back onto the enterprise. Just like you're asking, so that is, we are looking at that.
The other, the other piece of it was that um, our tax rate is the lowest in Essex County. While our water sewer rates are, you know, somewhere middle, average to on the higher side. Um, and at the time when the town really started doing this. You were, oh, you as a resident were able to write off more uh, on your tax. Um, on your taxes from the real estate side. Then the ten thousand dollar limit went into play, I think like, I don't know, five years ago, or five years ago. Which does limit how much you're able to write off, um, so that benefit has decreased a little bit. Uh, you still get a little bit of that benefit, but that was the other piece of it too.
Yeah. All right, thanks, uh, Gene, anything else before we vote?
No.
Okay, uh, roll call vote.
King can't D I.
Josh, I from I. Uh, next item is a vote to approve the F Y twenty four water sewer rates. I moved at the Board of Selectment vote to approve the F Y twenty four water rate of ten dollars and twenty-two cents per hundred cubic mi, cubic feet. And F Y twenty four sewer rate of eleven dollars and fifty-eight cents per hundred cubic feet.
Seconded.
Says here, the water rate for F Y twenty twenty-three for reference was nine dollars and ninety-three cents per hundred cubic feet. Uh, and there is no rate increase on the sewer rate, so I guess that means we were paying eleven fifty-eight in twenty twenty-three for sewer.
Yeah, it's the second, it's the second year in a row that we've been able to level font or level, levelize the, the rate for sewer. So to your point, Josh, as other communities, you know, have. Maybe their sewer rates have started to climb, you know, where we once were average or maybe a little bit above it. We might be a little bit, you know, down in that uh, comparison now. So it, it is as that changes, you know, it, it helps to participate in the conversation you're talking about under the last vote. My water rate is, you know. I wish I had, I wish I had like Essex County averages to share with you, but I know we're, I know we're on the higher side. Uh, on both of those, on both of those rates. But luckily, we've been able to have no increase in sewer rate for the last two fiscal years.
Yeah, that's, and that's good, because uh, some people may recall that. About three years ago, we thought we were gonna see a rather massive, like thirty percent rate increase due to the uh. Infrastructure improvements needed at Lynn Water and Sewer, it didn't work out quite so dire, so, so that's good news.
Yeah, I was just going to add that the uh, big drivers of coming up with these rates are the Lynn Water Sewer Assessment. And the M W R A assessment, and like you said, Josh, last year, um, we, the board approved a higher sewer rate. And then changed it mid-year because that Lynn Water Sewer Assessment came in lower than we originally anticipated.
Yeah, yeah, and um, just a question that might benefit some other people. Um, so if you use a lot of uh, outside, like garden spigot uh, water, you can have a separate meter. Which I do, for example, and um, in that case, the water is at the same rate, but you don't pay a sewage fee on it. Is that, is that how that's structured?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly, yes, if you are interested in getting, you know, in getting a second meter installed, just call uh, the town hall. And talk to the D B W office with Mary Love, and we can schedule a time uh, to, you know, work that out. You have to, you, you, a plumber, actually, you have to hire a plumber to have it installed, uh, but the town sells you the meter.
Yeah, and then, um, and just for people's information, the way that sewage, the sewage consumption is. Based on your water intake, not, there's no meter on your, your sewage outflow. So if, if you use a hundred cubic feet, uh, coming into your house, the assumption is a hundred cubic feet going out of your house. At the, at the, in build at the sewer rate. Gene, anything else? Uh, I don't have anything else, um, so roll call vote.
King can't D I.
Uh, Josh, I from I. All right, um. All right, um, the next vote is the vote to approve the sale of notes and sign the associated paperwork. Uh, this is a long motion and hopefully they have it open.
I can read it if you want.
That would be kind of you.
All right. I, the clerk of the Board of Selectment of the Town of the Halt, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the board held June twenty first, twenty twenty-three. Of which meeting, all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present. The following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted to approve the sale of six million, five hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. Four point seven five percent general obligation bond anticipation notes, the notes. Of the town dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty-three and payable January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. To B N Y Mellon Capital Markets LLC at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium. Of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixteen cents. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale. And preliminary official statement dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-three and a final official statement dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectment be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events. Disclosure undertaking in compliance with S E C Rule fifteen C two dash twelve. In such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes. For the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures. In such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient. Or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the notes. And to comply with relevant security laws. Further noted that any certificates or documents relating to the notes collectively, the documents may be executed in several counterparts. Each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file. Or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto. Having the same legal effect as ori- original signatures. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectment, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions. And execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them. To be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further satisfied, uh, I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot. That a notice stating the place, date, time and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk. And a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours and in or on the municipal building. That the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed. Or approved by the Attorney General Seporth in nine forty C M R twenty-nine point oh three two B. At least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remained so posted at the time of the meeting. That no deliberations or discussion in connection with the sale of the notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law, chapter thirty A. Sections eighteen through twenty-five as amended.
So moved.
Seconded.
Tony, great job. Deserve a glass of water. Um, yeah, so uh, this is a collection, this is a sum total of a, a number of different bonds, right, Allison? So there's all kinds of stuff here, like um, community preservation bonds and uh, fire truck and. Uh, the Coast Guard housing loan and basically water sewer stuff.
Yeah, so this is all the borrowing, um, basically, the town does this, we used to do it twice. So we used to um, issue bands in, at the end of June and the beginning of July. This year, we're actually combining the two issues into this one, um, just for June. So that's why the amount might seem a little bit higher than before, because it's two, it, we don't have the two different issues anymore. And yes, some of it's a rollover of issuances that we've already done for ongoing projects that aren't completed yet. And some of them are for new items such as the new fire truck. Um, the CPC funded um, article that allows the town to borrow for the town hall and cemetery improvements. Um, in sewer improvement, so it's a combined total for all those projects.
And of course, all those expenditures were approved at various town meetings.
Correct.
So there's no, uh, there's no mu- new money being um, spent here, it's just um. Uh, um, the, the catch-all bond.
Yeah, so we have to go through a pretty rigorous process with bond council where we have to provide proof. Um, that town meeting voted for all of these projects, you know, and um, it's a two-thirds vote for every borrowing article. Um, the clerk has to sign off on everything, the treasurer has to sign off, so it's a pretty rigorous um, paper trail that we follow with bond council.
Yeah, okay, thanks for that, I just didn't want to, and I think we were spending uh, six million dollars that hadn't been. Well thought out and voted on. Um, any other discussion?
No. No.
Um, okay, uh, roll call vote.
King can't D I.
Josh, I from I. Um, the next um, vote is a vote to approve the Essex Regional Retirement System Cost of Living Adjustment, COLA. I moved at the Board of Selectment vote to approve the Essex Regional Retirement System Cost of Living Adjustment. Discussion.
Allison, you can probably give some background on this.
Okay, yeah, that would be appreciated.
Uh, so there are nineteen communities that fall under the Essex Regional Retirement System. And uh, law was passed that allowed for these terms to increase the COLA. Um, percentage. From, in our case, what was originally three percent. Um, add an additional two percent, so a total of five percent. To the base of sixteen thousand dollars for retirees. Um, in order for this to actually go through, thirteen of the nineteen communities need to vote in favor of it. And right now, uh, twelve communities have voted, six have voted yes, six have voted no. Um, we, we asked, you know, the obvious, you know, follow-up question is what is the cost impact to the Town of the Halt? Uh, we asked that question to Essex Regional Retirement, and it's really not, um. Uh, we asked that question to Essex Regional Retirement and it's really not, um, a simple analysis to conduct. Uh, what are, you know, our response, uh, the, the response we got from um Essex uh, Essex County was the cost of the additional two percent is not assessed directly to individual municipal units based on the number of retirees or other demographic factors. Rather, this cost be included in the future calculations of the overall liabilities of the retirement system and will be allocated among all units via the annual appropriations.
So I have a couple problems with this, um, honestly. Uh, the first being, so there was a three percent raise July of twenty twenty-two. And this is proposing adding two percent on top of that retroactive to that date. Uh, the, the, the money in one form or another, I don't know how much it is or exactly where it comes from, but I guess the short answer is, would be from taxes, right? So, um, we're asking the taxpayers to, to give a five percent pay increase to a pension. And that's, I'm not very familiar with public pensions, but I know that private pensions, like the one I'll be able to draw on when I turn sixty-seven, will be the same amount when I'm sixty-seven as when I'm ninety-nine. Uh, I don't, so I, I would, I, I'm guessing that in general pensions don't have cost of living increases, but, but this one does, um, but it seems like a lot, it's, it's also retroactive. I understand that obviously the cost of living has gone up, but, um, uh, but I don't know what the right number is, um. And the other part that I, that I struggle with is, we don't even, I don't know how I can vote yes for some that I don't know how much it even is, I know it's two, two percent more, but I don't know if it's two percent of a million dollars, or two percent of five million dollars, or two percent of a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so it's hard for me to vote yes for that.
We know that the two percent cost impact to the entire system is somewhere around six and a half million, is that right, Allison? So some, you know, divided up amongst the nineteen uh communities.
Yeah, I think it said that's for two thousand, a little over two thousand retirees covered currently in the system.
Yeah, so, um, so I saw that too, yeah, um, so I guess I'm, I can until we know, like, some of these answers, I, uh, I would either uh, move to defer this uh to the next meeting, to when we can have some answers, or I can vote no. But I, I can give any clear conscious vote, yes.
Unfortunately, the vote has to be taken by uh, there was a deadline of end of June, so when if we're gonna vote, um, either way, it has to be done now before our next meeting.
Unless we, unless we had a pop-up meeting, so to speak. Uh, and, and I don't know, um, you know, Mark has particular feelings about this, or anyway, tho- those are my thoughts, Gene, I don't know, um, you had any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I do, I, I, I think that your assessment of this is spot on and, um, my, my biggest, not my biggest concern, my largest question would be where is the money coming from? And along with that, maybe doing as you just suggested, and that is having a, 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 a separate meeting on this prior to the deadline so that some of the questions that you have, that we all have, will get the answer. I don't, I don't wanna delay it, but at the same time, I don't wanna, I mean, this is the first we've, we've gotten involved in this and I don't wanna rush into it. So that's, that's kind of the way I look at it, well, more, more questions, more answers, and where's the money come from?
Yeah, and how much is it? Uh, yeah, I, I know you tried to get that answer, but we didn't get it in a way that's direct enough to really inform us, I think.
Allison, do you know, uh, do you, I'm looking through emails as I, as, as I'm asking what the deadline.
So it's to be implemented for the new fiscal year. Um, and so I believe they would need to know by July first.
So could we not somewhere towards the end of the month have a special meeting? Separate meeting for this?
I would be okay with doing it next week, um, if there's a time that Mark knows he's, can be available. And, and, um, hopefully we'll have some of the, and some answers to the questions that I raised.
I like that. I was, uh, I'm almost positive that there is a there's a deadline and I'm just trying to figure out what that date is before I can answer whether, you know, meeting next week would help at all. Obviously, if the deadline is, you know, Friday, then that doesn't do anything. Um, just looking for that, and, and the other piece of it is, um, so, like I said, thirteen communities have to vote yes, um, and six have voted yes so far. Uh, so, you know, if we vote yes, we're the seventh, um, it doesn't, you know, they need thirteen in order for it to go through. Uh, the money certainly would come out of our budget, not all six and a half million, obviously, um, but to, to to answer the question about, you know, we couldn't, we wouldn't really be able to tell you what our next fiscal year allocation is gonna be, regardless of the extra percent, you know, we couldn't tell you what our, what our, um, retirement system allocation, what the liability is gonna be next year at this point either way. So it's really hard to tell, uh, you know, what, how much extra is it gonna cost us if this were to go through? I don't think we'll have that answer, um, you know, even if we met again.
Yeah, that's my concern, that I don't think you're go- we're going to receive an answer to that question within a week. The way that our appropriation is calculated is based on an actuarial analysis that the retirement system has a third party do, and there's all sorts of factors that, you know, go into that besides just a cost of living increase, um, and we don't even know what that appropriation is until halfway through the fiscal year for the following year.
It, isn't, isn't, isn't it somewhat unusual to be giving a over two years or over a year a five percent increase to our retirement fund?
Yeah, required, it was part of the state budget, um, that enacted the local option. Um, so it, it took a, it took a legislative effort, so yeah, it is, it is, um.
I'm, I'm not looking, I'm not looking to take it away, I'm uh, and, and, and I don't wanna hurt anybody's retirement fund, just would, I think Josh made some good points there that that's, maybe we can get answered within a couple of days, and maybe we can stay within the timeframe, I don't know, but it's just getting hit with it tonight and making that decision's a little testing.
Dan, can we, can we, um, I'm trying to think, you know, if we, we don't know if we can have this meeting next week. Um, but I'm not prepared to vote in favor of this until I have better understanding of what is, even what's typical, um, for cost of living increases uh, at its most fundamental level, and, um, yeah, we might not get an exact number, but be able to at least infer it by knowing how many people are on Nahat's retirement, um, payroll. And that two thousand, you know, it's some percentage of that two thousand, therefore it's some percentage of that six million, um. So I guess the question is we could vote to defer it until next week, or we could vote on it now, I guess.
What's another option?
There's a, there's a, I just wanna add another thing of, of information here, as of April fifth, the additional two percent COLA has been approved by sixty-seven local retirement boards. Of these systems, the increased to five percent has received full approval by fifty retirement boards and their local governing bodies. Um, including in the fully approved list is Norfolk County, which has the distinction of being the first county of the regional system to adopt the fiscal year twenty-three, five percent COLA. So it's, so you got, um, a decent chunk of, you know, retirement boards, a decent amount of retirement boards, local retirement boards that have already approved it.
Uh, I don't know, Josh, do you think this is enough due diligence on our part here to, uh, have asked the right questions, but not having the answer, do we vote on it?
Um, well, uh, if I'm forced to vote tonight, I would vote no.
So Josh, to answer your question, there are three things you can do, vote on it tonight, um, whoever made the motion can withdraw the motion and you can vote to table the motion as a secondary, uh, and as amendment to the motion, and in one of those three things are viable tonight.
Yeah, um, all right.
Yeah, I mean.
Sorry, I wanted to ask you, um, a question if I could, Tony, um, so Gene, do you think that we've have done enough due diligence on this?
No, no, but, but, but given the situation or the circumstance, um, it may change.
Yeah.
How we look at it.
All right, uh, sorry, Tony, um, you were gonna make a point?
I was gonna say, you know, tabling it, um, you know, is is probably the best option, and that way it gives you some time to potentially pull in together some more information and meet again and discuss it and potentially vote on it before the end of June. Um, and if you don't vote on it, uh, if we don't get back to it before the end of June, it's, we're not required to vote on this, um. You know, so it's, it's almost like if we don't get back to it, it's like voting no, um. Ultimately, the regional retirement system needs thirteen towns to vote yes. Though, tabling it, I think, sounds like a good idea, it gives us an opportunity to maybe answer any other questions that you might have. Um, like I said, I think that the, the biggest question you have, I think, is unanswerable. Um, but at least it gives you an opportunity to kind of revisit it if you want.
Yeah, well, it might not be answerable, but it's estimatable, I think, um. So I move that we, um, table the motion.
Seconded.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, just, just to add to that, this is not, I, I'm speaking for myself, but also I guess you, Josh, we're, we're not looking to vote no, we're looking to vote uh, in favor of, based on the, the right information or the correct assessment of what we're doing.
Yeah, I think we need to be in fully informed in order to, I mean, we, we were essentially voting voting, uh, taxpayer money, um, in, in my view, wouldn't be doing that without uh, all the information required, so, um, I vote to table motion and, uh, excuse me, uh, any more discussion? I guess I'll just add that, you know, uh, hopefully we can, uh, have another crack at this next week, but, um, uh, roll call vote.
Okay, uh, Jean Canti, I.
Josh, I'm from my. Okay, is all the new business. Um, how you doing, Gene, do you wanna keep going, or?
Uh, you know what, I'm gonna slide out from under, I, I appreciate you guys giving me that opportunity.
All right, thanks a lot, Gene.
So we gotta move to closer.
I move that the, uh, that we adjourn. Um, any discussion?
Uh, just that, you know, for folks that are on the call, after we adjourn, we'll, we'll just run through the opening statements real quick and, uh, the opening comments and, um, so if you wanna stay on after we adjourn, we'll just, Josh will read them off, and there's really no votes, there's no deliberation there, so we can still do that.
Yeah, will you still, um, give your, um, town administrator updates, Tony?
I can, yep.
Tony, just before I go, just one, one thing in general conversation. Um, I, I, for the second year in a row, I get that people asking me about paving, is there a schedule set yet?
Our, um, our paving plan was set to expire this year, so we actually have StanTech updating it currently. And they're, so they've been doing surveys of the streets and they're incorporating that into the sidewalk and signage plan that they delivered to us last year. So we're gonna have a brand-new sidewalk, street paving and signage five-year capital plan once they're done.
Okay, just, just so I can say, yes, I brought it up at the, at the meeting. So the area in front of the, the Village Stretch, that roadway?
Yep, that's definitely on our radar.
And the, and the other one is the, um,
That was pretty high up on the, on the priority list.
Excellent, and the other one is the, um, roadway into the wharf in and out.
Yes.
That left-hand side, even if it were smooth patched, it, it just, it's, it's terrible.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure off, based off the last plan and going into the new one, you know, the, the section of Nahat Road uh, from Little Nahat to Seaside Variety that, you know, wasn't included in the last pavement, paving, uh, that's gonna be part of it, um, that intersection of Valley Road and the intersection at the wharf are all um, hopefully part of those, part of that plan too, if not, it'll be the fa- the very following year.
Okay, and I'm told we did some paving, haven't seen it, it, it's a relay out, which badly needed it.
Yeah, it was just some pothole, some pothole patching, yep.
Okay, hey, thanks, guys, have a nice night.
Thanks, thanks, Gene, uh, we gotta vote, you gotta just, uh, vote, um, yes to adjournment. Or if you wanna keep going.
No, we can, we can vote.
Yes, uh, Gene, did you hear that?
You, what?
Uh, so there's an open motion on adjournment meeting. Uh, I couldn't quite hear that, Gene.
Am I good?
Uh, if you could just say you'd vote one more time, you, you're, you got staticky.
Jean Canti, I.
Thank you, uh, Josh, I'm from my, all right, so, um, stay on, folks, we're gonna keep talking, but, um, thank you, Gene. I guess we're now sort of not in a board of selectmen meeting anymore, but we have some information to.
Gene should actually hang up now.
I'm trying.
Okay, okay.
Well, we'll, we, we can wait till, uh, we see Gene disappear.
All right.
All right.
He's gone, all right, now we're just hanging out, bunch of citizens talking.
Yeah, um, shall I do the opening comments first?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just read through these quickly, some of these will be familiar. Uh, twenty twenty-three resident parking stickers are available for purchase at nahat.org, parking stickers are ten dollars each. Uh twenty twenty-three resident parking stickers are available for purchase at nahat.org. Parking stickers are ten dollars each, outstanding bills must be paid to the town and a census completed. The compost area is open on Wednesdays and Saturdays from nine AM to three PM. A twenty twenty-three resident sticker parking is required. Visit the public work. At nahat.org for a full list of accepted material. Recycling for metal, white goods, TVs, computers, et cetera, is the last Saturday of each one until October twenty-eighth, so I guess that's, is that this week? I think so, um. From eight AM to twelve PM noon, behind the DPW garage on Flash Road, twenty twenty-three resident stickers are required. Visit. The Public Works Department at nahat.org for accepted material. Certain fees may apply. Uh July festivities, uh July third, uh there's a Horribles Parade beginning at five PM in front of Compost Area on Spring Road. Um sidebar, um I was reading about Horribles Parades recently, and it's it's a fairly local phenomenon, kind of an interesting. History, if you ever want to go down a a Googling rabbit hole about Horribles Parades. Um. July fourth, the Torsten Hair Road Race Registration begins at seven thirty in front of the fire station on Flash Road. Route map can be found on the community calendar. Field races will be directly after the road race at nine AM behind the fire station. Excuse me, July eighth. Is a wharf event from five thirty PM to eight thirty PM. Fireworks begin at nine AM from Bailey's Hill, so there's a. Uh vendor, so on um. Anything that people should know about this event?
I'm sharing my screen. All this information can be found on nahat.org. Uh there's a July events, you know, Nahat Summer Twenty Twenty-three Events page. Um, there was some, you know, question about whether the. Uh field races would be on the fourth or on the eighth. It looks like we, they are gonna be on the fourth of July. And yeah, and on the eighth, similar to last year, we're gonna have a band, uh some food, um some ice cream and um. Roll that right into the fireworks at nine o'clock.
Perfect, it's gonna be a lot of fun. Uh there, I'll remind people, there are a lot of parking restrictions associated with this event, so um. Be prepared. Uh the Nahat Market by the Sea, which was formerly Nahat Farmer's Market, is on. From ten AM to one PM at Flash Road Park. And these are on July fifteenth, August nineteenth, September sixteenth, and October fourteenth. For more information or to become a vendor, visit the market page at nahat.org or email kaytaylor@nahat.org. And last but not least. Um Nahat's Library Director Sharon Hawks uh is, has announced her retirement, and I see Sharon is on the line. Um Sharon, um thank you so much for your years of service and um really transforming. Uh Nahat Public Library into a a modern institution um with old world charm, so thank you so much and um. Please, if uh be great if you had a few words to share with us.
Oh, thank you very much, Josh. I appreciate that. Um, lots to do yet. I'm I'm uh working toward a retirement uh by the end of September. So that will take us all the way through summer, and we've got the summer reading programs coming up on the fifth, uh starting July fifth, and people can sign up for that now. The summer music series is starting on July sixth. That's been very popular, and the Friends Giant Book Sale on July twenty-ninth, which is the same as the ending of the summer reading program. So we're gonna be plenty busy. I'll be around, um much, much to do. Uh but we're uh, we've begun the work to um look for a replacement. And uh that'll be a very exciting process as well.
All right, thank you so much and and thanks for um. Um joining tonight and. Sharing your plans for the summer and what happens next, we'll see.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. Uh, that is it for opening comments. We've already gone through new business.
Uh, there was one more too, um just wanted to mention uh the passing of Charlie Jessam.
Oh, yeah.
We um. I'll share a picture here, um. Chuck served uh as a call firefighter for approximately forty-five years. Um, and if you can see this picture, he actually is the gentleman in the far back. Uh running, carrying the boots. So he actually started working for the Call Fire Department when he was operating out of the town hall.
Wow.
Uh so, you know, very dedicated volunteer and servant of the town. Um so we wish uh his family well and uh he will be missed.
Thank you for bringing that up, Tony. Um, all right, with that, I guess we have uh ongoing business. Um Nine Little Hot Road update. Um Dan, you have uh some exciting news for us here?
I I think Ed Lockett's on the line. I can get a lot of work to get this happen, so let's let him uh make the big announcement.
All right.
He can unmute himself.
If you can unmute there, Ed.
I am unmuted now, um. I I can't take all the credit. Um uh Dan did the bulk of the negotiations, but at the end of the day, Nine Little Nahat Road, uh we received proceeds. Um, came to the town hall today with the proceeds. I actually made sure that they were processed through the system and have taken Nine Little Nahat Road out of tax title, and it's been redeemed and um. No, I I, you know, there was many years prior to me that people had dealt with this. It's finally come to a conclusion and um. The town has reaped some of the benefit of the um money that we received through Dan's negotiations. And they've been processed in the system, and now they're credited to Nahat Bank accounts. So thank you to all that were involved, Allison, Tony, Dan, and anybody else in the office, uh the Assistant Treasurer Kelly, um there was a lot of work. Behind the scenes to make this all happen and um. Again, I don't mean to repeat myself, but it has come to a conclusion, and we're, we are done as of today of moving forward with Nine Little Nahat Road. So now we should be getting tax money from the new owner.
That's great, so.
Good work. You've got that big information there. You've got the number.
Yeah, give us the.
Wow, okay. So um, this is for those of them that don't know, uh this has been going on for some twenty-odd years. The the total number was received from HUD uh just in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh today. Uh Dan, I think it was back in March, we received uh just over fifty-eight or six thousand, fifty-six or fifty-eight thousand dollars. So in total, in excess of over three hundred thou, just over three hundred thousand dollars.
Right, so we we got today, we got a check for like like Ed said, over a quarter of a million dollars, and that covers our entire principal, which is important to say. The only thing that we had to abate, and the DR was really great in making this happen quickly, and Sheila did a great job of getting this application out. Was um was interest, principal, I'm sorry, interest, uh what they call treasurer's interest and and collector's interest, yeah. So the only thing that we had to abate was interest. We got our principal back. Plus some, so this is a win, I I'd like to say, for town hall.
Absolutely, it's um three hundred thousand dollars we didn't have before, and uh it was looking quite challenging to get anything close to this. Um, you know, to refresh people's memory, Dan, the first offer they made was HUD made was ten thousand dollars, so and we wound up with over three hundred thousand.
I begged them not to actually articulate that, because I know that would piss off. I said, do not make me take that back. They will not like that, and then obviously, we.
Well, you're right, we didn't like it, but um but but you stuck with it, so uh.
Yeah.
As a, as a taxpayer in the hut, thank you very much.
Yep, happy to help. Yep, and our bond rating is now gonna be better off because we're not got all, it's all off the books now. There's, MLC is now zero, zero, zero. So we're now looking for the new owner. The new owner, um the broker told me that the intention of the new owner is to create a grand home and then sell it. So there was no talk of any condos or anything like that. Now that, he's not bound to that, but that's what they told me, and hopefully they'll stay true to that.
Yeah. I think. Uh, he's definitely not uh eligible for the um real estate tax deferment program, so.
I know he's got twenty-some years before that can happen.
Uh no, no.
He's a young guy, he's in his forties, I think.
Yeah. Okay, that's great news. Thanks so much, guys.
Good work.
Uh. Uh Preserving East Point. Um, there's not much new here. Um I know Selectman Conan gave his deposition um. Last week, uh mine is scheduled for uh June twenty-ninth. Um, I think uh former um acting town administrator Jerry Perry has one coming. And um former Selectman Enzo Grill has one coming up. Uh in early July and um. And really, that's all that's on the near-term horizon. Um, with that, town administrators report.
Um, so um first on my list is Coast Guard Housing Update. Uh we have a demo, an RFP for. Um demo of the vacant properties, which is nine of the twelve. Uh is out on the street, and we will be uh opening those bids. A week from tomorrow. Um and then we'll be negotiating a contract, and so once we uh. You know, find a reliable vendor and award the contract with them. Uh we'll have a better understanding of what the next schedule, you know, and what what the next timeframe is gonna be. Uh but we're making some good progress there. Um. Board and committee vacancies update. So I've gotten, I've gotten an updated list from our town clerk about uh which vacancies um. Are existing, which appointments are uh expiring at the end of June. Uh working to renew the expert, the expiring ones, and also wanna post uh all the vacant seats online uh this week. And really kind of give folks uh, you know, the next couple of weeks to submit their letter of interest. Uh if they're interested in joining any of those uh committees, um and then we'll go on a more, you know, intense search. Uh to fill those seats so that those committees can do their business. Um. Um I, when I was going through the list. Uh I found a couple inaccuracies, so I wanna continue to go through that with the clerk tomorrow, and then we'll post. Uh we'll, we'll, we'll be posting, you know, that final list on Facebook and on and on our website.
All right, yeah, I just, I'd like to encourage anybody that has thoughts or it uh, you know, feels like they have a little spare time, they wanna give to the town. Um, the town really does require, uh really does rely on um volunteers to make, to make the whole thing work, so uh please consider doing that if. And what's nice about it is you can choose a committee that's uh, you know, in line with your particular interests, so.
I know, I know that there's, you know, vacancy on the, on the planning board. There's a vacancy on the concom. There's vacancies on cultural council, on um. Open space, you know, there's uh, so there's definitely a number of different opportunities uh should people be interested. And like I said, we're gonna post that, and then there's, there should be a description of what those committees' missions are on their page on our website, so. Additional information can be found there. Um, we already went through the July events and fireworks information. Um today, oh, I just wanted to also mention, you know, last week, uh we went into. We went to Boston to the State House. Uh Virginia Fisk was honored uh by the governor and lieutenant governor. Uh for uh Women's Veterans Day. She was a uh recognized as a guest of honor, and um it was really a. A very, it was really a great event and um happy to be there. Uh the, we had the Johnson School. Um. Moving On Ceremony last week. Josh, you and I met with uh Willow Road. Uh Community and Ocean View and the golf course owners. Um, which was a very productive community meeting, so we've had a lot of, you know, events and meetings happening over the last couple of weeks. Um. And, you know, I'm sure they're gonna continue. Uh a lot of, a lot of different projects. I started putting together a a project list and working on that with Zach. Um, what the, two of the most pressing items, uh we made some significant progress on today. One is the sewer projects. Uh we have SRF, State Revolving Fund funding. For those projects, and they uh required an an extension. To utilize the SRF funding that we've been approved for, and so today we submitted. Through, you know, working with EEP and coming up with a a accurate schedule that works for all the parties involved, we submitted a request for an extension. Um to, you know, get our very important projects done, specifically the Ward Road Pump Station and II work throughout the town. Um. Feel very good with our request. We got some very good feedback uh on that. The other is the Council on Agent Kitchen. Uh it's a CPC. We have a CPC grant for one-third of it. We have town. Funds approved at the most recent town meeting for another third of it, and we have uh state funds for the last third of it. The state funds need to be spent before the end of the fiscal year, um but really to make sure that we were. You know, what we really needed to do was go to the Historical Commission and ensure that the project design and plan was approved by them. So that we were confident in our budget, and we could sign a contract with the architects and move forward. Uh we, we had a meeting with the Historical Commission tonight. Before this meeting, they voted in favor of the proposal. Uh so now we're gonna be contracting with uh Vance Architects and moving forward um and should be. Uh shouldn't need an extension on spending the state funds, should be able to spend that down by the end of the month. So that was, that was a lot of good progress there. Uh, the other, another, you know, kind of pressing item. Um, under CPC, we have, we have other CPC projects approved from previous fiscal years that we really need to make some progress on. Such as the arch at the cemetery, which is in desperate need of repair. Um, the ADA access at the town hall, uh but we just also approved funding for rights of ways and for. Um pickleball, which, you know, I know um rights of ways is a, is a um priority of the board, and then pickleball, you know. Folks wanna be able to utilize it this summer, so I'm trying to get that, um get that done as soon as possible as well. Um. Very, very long list here that I'm putting together. It's not really ready for um, you know. The spotlight yet, but um. A lot of, a lot of projects on this list and a lot of good work happening. I also was able to meet with the Open Space Committee uh last night. Who's moving forward on uh the East Point signage, you know, East Point um Lodge Park signage and trails, trail signage. Wayfinding signage, historical signage, um. They're taking the lead on that. We talked about uh playground planning and recreational space planning. And um, you know, lastly, I'll say, uh August, we, we're hoping in August that we take delivery of the new. Playground equipment at the Little Nahat Playground, and it should be installed. Uh which, which features a, a shipwreck and a humpback whale, so uh should be, should be enjoyable. Uh for the, for the kids in that area, so.
Sounds great. That's a lot of stuff, Tony.
And it's, and that's only a, a fraction of it, but um, you know, it's seven thirty, so I wanna.
Uh, one, one very quick question, um. Guard uh demolition RFP. Are are we required to go with a low bidder?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, signage too. We talked, Josh, you also wanted me to talk a little bit about the signage. Um so we have a sign study, traffic sign study is completed. It recommended a lot of changes throughout the town to existing signage and then new signage that needs to go up. Uh we're really focusing on, you know, Nahat Road, the main thoroughfare of the town, um but as an update. You know, a lot of those signs weren't even reflective, so you wouldn't see them at night. Um but. All posts and signs have been replaced on all of Marginal Road, all of Cliff Street, all of Vernon. Um on the hot road from Swallow Cave. Um, on Nahat Road from Swallow Cave, uh from the end of Swallow Cave all the way to Forty Steps and then from Antigo Way all the way to the bank, all those signs have been replaced, all the traffic signs, speed signs. Um, we added that we replaced the electric speed uh monitoring sign uh up at Little Nahat, and we have some no idling signs in place at Canoe Beach and Tri-Mon parking lot and more in stock to be installed this week.
Great, good to see some progress on that.
Um, I bet you people don't even notice it, you know, but they're up there.
Yeah, well, I gotta admit, I live on the hot road and I didn't notice the signs were new, so um.
But uh. Signs, people don't even see them.
Uh, hey Dan, did you have something you were wanting to say?
Me?
Yeah.
No, I can tell you though that we're reinstituting the uh litigation against the three remaining residences that are occupied at at the um Coast Guard Housing, so um that's, it's getting started again, uh we had, I think, eleven, what, Tony, it was eleven or twelve at the beginning, now we're down to three. Um, you know, guys that are just, people that are just sort of digging in their heels, so to be expected, but that goes on.
Okay. All right, um. Uh, I guess we could do form in informal citizens forum, so I don't know if there's anyone that uh comments or any chat. Feel free to unmute yourself.
Yeah, nothing in the chat.
All right.
Yeah, George, I see you came off uh mute, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't know how to raise my hands, the only way I know how to get on is unmute everything, I still haven't figured out.
Could you uh, could you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, George Mahoven, sixty four Lennox Road, Nahat.
Thanks.
Um, a couple of questions, um first of all, about the right of ways. I happened to watch the planning board meeting, um not last night, but the last week. And they said they were over and done with the right of way at the um, what we call our East Point over in Little Nahat and at the um intersection of Little Nahat Road and Wilson Road. What does that mean? I mean, does that mean that you guys just uh just sort of abandoned, trying to get us some steers and canning us down to the rocks down there?
Uh, I mean, you know, they're an elected board, you really should ask them what they meant by whatever comments they made, I didn't tune in. Um, but I can tell you that, you know, Dan and Dan and I have been, you know, looking at that one, there's, there is some legal impediments to uh potentially being able to make some progress there that we wanna make. Um, uh Dan, you wanna add to that or?
Well, uh not really, because it is a legal issue that we're trying to deal with, um and I don't wanna get into its detail without, you know, compromising our position. But the fact remains that the owner, the uh, one of the owners that abut that right of way are claiming that we don't own it. So we have to deal with that, um and that's what we're doing.
So, I put, from my perspective, George, we're still, we're still trying to, we're still trying to make progress there.
Yeah, I was, I was on the understanding that the, the owner was claiming rights to five feet of that ten foot right of way. And if that is so, why can't we just make a five foot right of way down there?
It, it, well, the issue is bigger than that, uh it's, it's not that simple. And it, and I say that, George, not to be a wise guy, but this is really this, this is due to us, because well, when Tony and I inherited this issue, actually, I gotta say, when Jeff Shelgman and I inherited this issue, we thought some of this due diligence was done. And it turns out that uh that may not be the case, but it's okay, we'll deal with it.
Yeah, no, okay, as long, as long as this hasn't been forgotten and you guys are still.
No, I don't know what the planning board was talking about, I agree with Tony, that's the wrong thing.
Yeah, oh, that's.
George, on the, on the one at the bottom of the stairs there, um on Wilson Road, where Joe Moshe's rebuilding that home across the street, um he's been great to work with and and has, and actually has um restored the access to that right of way.
Yeah, I, I, I noticed that, but the only, only thing with that is that the, the access was, was there. Um, the gate has seemed to be moved now and the gate seems to be on the owner's property getting access to the right of way down there, so hopefully that's not gonna be a problem, they're not gonna say, okay, you can't use that gate, cause it's on my property now.
The gate, the gate is for the walkway for that property.
Okay.
But there's an, and there, there's a new set of stairs without a gate that's on the right of way. So, so there's free and clear access, it's not done yet.
Yeah.
Uh, he's been great, you know, helping us kind of restore. It was, it was, it kind of, it worked out, that was one of those cases where, you know, the previous owner had encroached and now Joe took it over, it was, and was rebuilding the property, so it was a perfect opportunity for us to work with him to regain, you know, the uh access to that, to that.
Yeah, he, he, he told me that you, you approached him and, and, and told him to make sure that the right of way stays the right of way, and I appreciate that, cause I, I, I personally know Joe, I live around the corner from Joe, I've known him uh for forty years, for Pete's sake, when he, when he first moved in the hut many, many years ago and uh he did mention that you were, you were on top of that, so I really appreciate that, Tony, thank you very much.
And when it's, and when it's done, uh our plan is to restore the crosswalk there too.
Oh, great, yeah, cause that, I was gonna mention that, when you, when you picked, when you mentioned that, um, a couple of days ago, I drove by there and there was a uh a large truck parked right in front of the steer, so if you walked down those steers, you weren't gonna be able to get out of there, that it was a big huge truck and you, and I, you know, I, I actually stopped and looked, you couldn't even squeeze between the truck and um, you know, anywhere, it, it was right up there, so a crosswalk would definitely, you know, stop that problem anyways.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then the third question is on the motion to make the amendment through the article twenty-four that I made, and it seems from where I can gather, it's passed. Now we're waiting for the Attorney General's Office to okay it. Um, I believe it takes up to ninety days for them to make a decision. Um, if the decision is that everything was up and above board, excuse me, and done correctly at the town meeting. And it is deemed that, okay, the bylaw now is the new bylaw. How does that work? How do you implement that and where do we go forward from there?
Um, I can take that, Tony.
Uh, I mean, is it, is it really answerable right now? I mean, it's, it's something that we're gonna be kind of working out as we go through this, oh, we, as we get through over the next ninety days. Um, you know, part of that motion, part of that article um required that short-term rentals get a local license and obviously, should it pass the way that it was amended. Um, if you are, if you don't have a special permit. If, you know, you wouldn't be able to get, if you're not, if you're not owner occupied. Um, or if you're non-owner occupied and you don't have a special permit, you wouldn't be able to get a local license, so. But the Board of Selectmen have to put together regulations um in accordance with the law after it's approved by the AG. So is it, is it, it's kind of hard to answer um right now, but Dan, go ahead and.
Yeah, there's still a lot of moving parts, the AG has to weigh in, um and I think the AG, that municipal law unit office uh was predicting sometime around September, we'll give their, their response to us. And then Diane has to publish and post it and then it becomes official, there is a retroactive portion of it, but that doesn't really apply here. And then we're off to the races in terms of getting the regulations done and then um ensuring compliance. There was, there was a um, there was a, I don't know what you call it, opposite of Sunset Provision, it's, it's the, it takes effect a while after I think the registration process, so um the point, the point is, we're still waiting for the AG to get back to us, once we get a response, assuming it's positive, we publish and post and then it becomes effective full-time and then we go from there, the big fight's gonna be whether a grandfathering occurs, but that decision hasn't been made yet.
I understand that, 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 that's gonna be another battle, but that's uh been already taken up in the court of law and over in Linfield and they ruled they can't grandfather, so.
No, 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 that doesn't apply to us, though.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I understand that, but I'm just saying, hopefully the town will will understand that by grandfathering these in, it's just gonna defeat the whole purpose of having a non-owner occupied short-term rentals in, in residential areas, cause you know, as we know, there's a whole bunch of them already around in town and we know by the townspeople, so they don't want them, period, in residential areas. So, again, I just wanted to make that point, and also, um who decides, you're gonna form different boards to decide this? Um, uh, am I gonna be privy to the information that you people are bantering back and forth at, in meetings and so on and so forth? Is the town gonna be privy to this information? Um, are we gonna have a say in how the rules are made or what rules are made? And in grandfathering the whole nine yards, this isn't just up to the Board of Selectmen, is it?
Okay, I think we're, I think we're, I think we're, we're going, we're going too deep into a conversation right now that we don't have any answers to.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's it's a, it's a loaded conversation, I just, you know, we're with it. We really, first step is get the AG to review and make a decision. Um, the question about grandfathering in, you know, is not gonna be really a Board of Selectmen determination. Uh, so it's really not the proper venue, um it's more of that's likely gonna be a ZBA question and then potentially a land corp question, so it really, I think it'd be, it puts us in a tough spot to kind of weigh in on that at this point, I think.
All right, well, well, will the town, um meaning myself also, would be kept informed in all the you know, the ins and outs and what's going on and, and where we are in individual particular times and what's being done to you know, either assist in putting this new bylaw through or will people gonna be pushing back against it? You know, do we, are we gonna be able to, again, you know, have input to all this?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd say, George, that um you, you know, I, obviously, like with any topic, you'll have to pay attention to the agendas on, on the open meetings, you know. But of course, all, all selectman meetings are open meetings, all planning board meetings are open meetings, so all ZBA meetings are open meetings, so um so you gotta, you know, you gotta keep your eye on the community calendar for when various committees are taking up the topic, but um it would have to be on their agenda in, in during open meetings, so.
Yeah, but there's, you know, being, being the sponsor of the bill per se is no way that I could um be kept in a loop a little more than just looking at the calendars, cause I look at them and sometimes there's there's nothing there, then you look at it two days later and then all of a sudden, um like this meeting here wasn't there last week about the um Selectmen's meeting, so sometimes it's, you know, you, you gotta look at it daily or, or, you know. I, I could be kept in the loop where I, I'm like, I'm the one.
You can, you can um subscribe, George, to the website.
I have subscribed and I, and I still seem to get any from the, from the website.
You, you might have to change your settings, but you should get notifications if you're subscribed to like the community calendar for municipal meetings.
Yeah, I am and I haven't got anything, so I, and when you say change my settings, I don't like to touch buttons on this computer, I don't know what it does cause I'm afraid I'm gonna wipe the whole computer out, so I, I, as far as setting goes, I don't know what you mean.
Uh, just stop by the town hall, I'll help you out.
Well, that sounds good, maybe I, I'll, I'll do that sometime, Tony, thank you very much, so should I bring my computer with me?
No, it's, it's, it's just your, it's your, it's not the settings on your computer, it's, it's your subscription settings to the website. So we can do, we can do it on any computer.
Uh, okay, that sounds wonderful, thank you. And um, um, let's see, anything else? No, it sounds good, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned also the playground over, uh if you're in Little Nahat, um, you know, I'm really, really happy about this coming to tuition this August, I think the uh, the children over here definitely deserve it. Uh, hopefully it'll be well-used and uh, and um lasts for, for many years down there.
Yeah, it's, I can't wait, I can't wait.
Neither can I, uh, thank you very much, guys, enjoy. Yeah, good night now.
Yeah, anybody else, Michelle, I saw you had your hand up a little bit ago.
Yeah, thanks, Josh, Michelle Capone, twenty-nine Ocean Street, I'm an alternate member on the planning board and in a, I was in attendance at last week's meeting. To clarify Mr. Mahoven's comments, the issue before the planning board is to understand the work that the Board of Selectmen has taken on the rights of way. And an action item was identified to communicate a right to the Board of Selectmen to understand what those activities were, what is outstanding, so that the planning board can pick up from some of the work that was done uh by other boards. So it's, certain work was done, Dan has described some of that work, some work is possibly paused due to other actions that need to take, but the planning board wants to understand what has been completed so they don't duplicate or undo work that's been done by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thank, thanks for the uh, for flushing that out for us. All right, anybody else? All right, I think we can say goodnight.
All right, guys, goodnight.
All right, good morning.